If there are any scouts in the audience, if you come to see me at the end of the dais here, thanks. Last call, if we have any scouts in the audience, come see me at the end of the dais, thanks.
Okay, board members, please take your seats. This October 8, 2015, regular meeting number five of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Chamber Orchestra of Luther Jackson Middle School under the direction of Ms. Katie LeBrie.
Yeah, not here.
Okay. Let's go ahead.
I...
Congratulations to the flag of the United States. We truly call upon our Christian hands, our nation, our God. Jesus Christ, who is with us, who is with us.
Wow, that was really lovely. Thank you so much, and thank you, parents, who are here tonight to share your children's talents with us. It was a great way to start the meeting.
I don't know if Mr. Lehman, Chad Lehman's, in the room, but I know he's very, very proud of the students. I'm just amazed. That was an incredible performance, so thank you, parents.
All right, item 1.02, announcements. I call on Mr. Press. No, I'm sorry, before I call on Mr. Press, I have a few announcements. Mr. Stork will be late this evening. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. I will now call on Mr. Press for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board will be recognizing a few special occasions this month. First off is National Dyslexia Awareness Month, which will be celebrated in October. October is National Dyslexia Awareness Month. Dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that results in people having difficulties learning to read, spell, write, and pronounce words. Recognizing the markers of dyslexia and intervening early helps provide opportunities for future success. This month and next, the Office of Special Education Instruction will be offering several opportunities to help raise awareness about dyslexia. On Tuesday, October 20, and Friday, November 13, parent workshops will be held on strategies to support secondary students with dyslexia and strategies to support elementary students with dyslexia. These workshops will be held at the Parent Resource Center and will highlight strategies to support reading, writing, and math at home, ways to promote effective study skills, and strategies to promote self-advocacy skills. Please check our FCPS website for more information. The School Board formally recognized National Dyslexia Awareness Month at the October 22 regular Board Meeting. We'll also be recognizing National School Lunch Week, which will be from October 12 to 16 of this month. Using the theme "School Lunch Snapshot," the 2015 National School Lunch Week will encourage school-based staff members to share the best, real images of school lunches today, including fresh fruits and veggies, whole grains, milk, and happy students. The 2015 event will encourage school food professionals to use social media to spread the word about healthy school lunches. The National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children and has been joined through the years by many other excellent child nutrition programs. There's a continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs, and the School Board encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hopes of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future. We'll also be recognizing Teen Read Week, which will be from the 18th to the 24th of this month. Teen Read Week encourages teens to go beyond the traditional book and explore poetry, audiobooks, books about music, and more at their school and local library. The 2015 theme, Get Away at Your Library, encourages teens to escape their daily routines and pick up something fun to read: fantasy novels, science fiction, beach reads, travel books, or tales of adventure. Teen Read Week has been observed since 1998 in an effort to engage teens in reading for pleasure and fun and to use the services at the library. Research shows that teens who read for fun have better test scores and are more likely to succeed in the workforce. The School Board encourages all FCPS teenage students to take advantage of the resources in their public school and library and to become lifelong readers and learners. And finally, we'll be recognizing Mental Health Awareness Week, which is actually this week, October 4 through 10. During the first full week of October, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, and participants across the country are bringing awareness to mental illness. Each year, NAMI works to fight the stigma of mental illness, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for equal care. NAMI believes that these issues are important to address year-round, but highlighting these issues during Mental Health Awareness Week provides a time for people to come together and display the passion and strength of those working to improve the lives of the tens of millions of Americans affected by mental illness. This year's theme is "I Am Stigma Free." Being stigma-free means learning about and educating others on mental illness, focusing on connecting people to see each other as individuals and not a diagnosis, and most importantly, taking action on mental health issues. The hashtag for the theme is #IAMSTIGMAFREE. I'd also like to recognize a few Boy Scouts we have in the audience today. First off, Brendan Jarvis from Troop 652 in McLean, Nick Schimmel from Troop 1572 in Herndon, and John Fung from Troop 159 in Herndon, if you'd all stand to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Item 1.03, Recognition of National School Bus Safety Week. I call on Mr. Moon.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. We cannot educate children of Fairfax County if they cannot get to the schools. So we are very thankful for our 1,610 bus drivers who daily bring our 138,693 eligible bus riders safely to and from our schools in all kinds of weather. Our drivers know the stops or 10,969 bus stop locations. Can you believe that? Our drivers know the parents at the stops, they know the personalities of their riders. They have eyes in the back of their heads and on the sides as well. They intuit travel in the back of the bus. They know when a child has a good day, and they are mom, dad, and taxi drivers all rolled into one. Here are some other amazing facts. In FCPS, there are 25 million bus rides per year. 92,466 miles are traveled every day by our yellow vehicles, and they log in a total of 16.6 million miles annually. The major responsibility for school bus safety in Fairfax County rests firmly in the hands of our bus drivers and attendants. Therefore, it is no wonder that the week of October 19 through 23 has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week. Based on the theme, Be Smart, Be Seen, I Wait in a Safe Place, the week focuses on street on safety when waiting for and boarding a school bus. School bus safety is an issue for all citizens of Fairfax County who need to be aware of laws requiring them to stop and wait behind the school bus when it is loading and loading street on riders. We are joined by, do we have a bus driver in the attendance? We did not require them to be here because we know that they need to get up all in the morning and start their engines and start picking up kids. But we have Jeff Plattenberg, Assistant Superintendent from Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, Francine Forby, Director of Office of Transportation Services, and Tim Parker, Assistant Director of Office of Transportation Services. I want to invite all three of them to come forward on behalf of all the bus drivers and attendants for a photo with my colleagues on the board, including Superintendent.
Okay, item 2.01, Citizen Participation. The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. Tonight, three citizens have signed up to address the Board: Steven Greenberg, Jason Zara, and Kimberly Adams. Mr. Greenberg?
Dr. Garza, Chairman Hines, legendary Mr. Press, esteemed School Board members, my name is Steve Greenberg. I'm president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent outstanding educators in FCPS, those whose focus is on our students, educating, protecting, and caring for them daily. I'll be speaking tonight to Agenda Item 5.04, which is the VRS Resolution, as well as 2.03, Spotlight on Learning, Get to Green. First of all, please know how much SCFT appreciates Elaine Tholen, the FCPS Program Manager for Environmental Stewardship. I want this Division Superintendent and this School Board to know how dedicated she's been in supporting our teachers and our union through our Sustainability Committee. As you may remember, SCFT Executive Board Member Tina Williams spoke to you last spring about the great work that SCFT members in this FCPS department have accomplished together to promote environmental stewardship and to make our schools and community more green. I'd like to thank all of the School Board members who also met with Tina over the summer. Ms. Tholen has spent countless hours after school attending our committee meetings and assisting our teachers with projects like Get to Green. It's the dedication of leaders like her to facilitate the passions of our educators and to make our schools and community a better place to learn and live that truly encapsulates what professionalism and collaboration is all about and what it can accomplish. Thank you, Ms. Tholen. Please know that SCFT supports that the School Board pass the resolution not to elect using an employer-sponsored hybrid 403 plan. Our lobbyists followed this 2015 legislation, Senate Bill 1162 and House Bill 2178 closely. This legislation was passed in the same manner as that which cost our teachers their due process rights a few years ago. Politicians selling out teachers and kissing special interest lobbies in return for votes or favors down the road. To be clear, this is not about flexibility. This is about insurance investment profiteers potentially taking advantage of our teachers. The current plan offer will not be matched by any outside vendor, so it's actually a trick choice. Remember, our goal is to attract and retain grade teachers, not to encourage them to switch employers 11 times in their career like in the private sector. Anyone coming up here to advocate against your resolution is a wolf in sheep's clothing and is very dangerous. You'd think they destroyed our pension enough over the past few years, underfunding it and transferring the burden to you locally as a school board. Thank you for your position on this tonight. If you require additional information on it, I'd be happy to refer you over to our lobbyists, who will be happy to give you an earful. This certainly is about choice. Thank you for choosing to protect your employees by not biting into the poison apple. Thank you for choosing not to elect using an employer-sponsored hybrid of the 403B plan. Thank you for looking out for all of us and caring about your employees. Good night.
Thank you. Jason Zara?
Good evening. Thank you, School Board, for taking time to listen to me. I wanted to show up today to give my full support of the next order of business, 3.01, adjusting the school boundary between Freedom Hill Elementary School and Vienna Elementary School. I'm a parent of three children, two who are currently in FCPS schools. I believe I might be the only father who has a child in each of those two schools. I have a fourth grader at Freedom Hill and a first grader at Vienna Elementary. I've been involved in the discussion with Pat and Patty for several years now about redistricting our neighborhood, which is currently a split feeder where our children go to Vienna Elementary and, or sorry, go to Freedom Hill Elementary, then transfer over to Thoreau and Madison. And the vast majority of the community around me, my neighbors, many didn't even know it when they bought their homes. Actually, our MLS listing for our neighbor's house that's up for sale currently says they are redistricted from Vienna Elementary. So a lot of parents move in not believing that they, you know, are at Freedom Hill. Both wonderful schools. I was very happy throughout the process. I believe that both Pat and Patty and the district office worked very hard to develop a solution that was generous, phased in, took into account the families. Every family's got different issues. I have different issues now than I did three years ago when we started discussing this. There's never a good time that's going to make everybody happy. But throughout the last three years in these discussions and public meetings, I've never heard an argument that it's better to have children not go with a cohort to the same middle school and high school than not. So I thank you for your time and thank you for your support on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Zara. Kimberly Adams?
Good evening, Chairman Hines, members of the School Board, and Dr. Garza. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I speak before you as the president of the Fairfax Education Association. I would like to take a moment to thank so many of you for attending our Put Kids First event on September 18. We were pleased to have drawn involvement from our community, including elected officials, our members, parents, and students. As we take time this month to acknowledge the positive impact of safe transportation and healthy food for our students, the FEA would like to take the opportunity to highlight the work of outstanding employees who make this happen. We thank the attendant for comforting a special needs student, the driver who navigates our roads, the call center manager who deals with calls from drivers, the parents who call to find route information from supervisors, and the director of Transportation Services, and all those who keep transportation moving. We thank the food service staff in our schools, guiding our students tasty choices, the purchasers for making healthy decisions, the dieticians who balance our menus, the director of Food Nutrition Services, and all those in the department for fostering healthy eating. We want to remind this Board that the work of these dedicated staff is essential to our system. The employees and members who carry out these duties are to be commended for their tireless efforts to meet the basic needs of over 180,000 students every single day. FEA would also like to thank this Board for its recent willingness to stand with FCPS employees on issues of importance to the workforce. Every year, we face decisions that will ultimately affect the lives of so many who dedicate their time and talents to our school system. FEA stands ready to advocate for them on a broad range of issues, such as health care and other benefits. We look forward to continuing to bring our knowledge and expertise to the table with the FCPS administration to address challenges in order to help you make the best decisions for your employees. Thank you for continuing to value our voices by insisting on employee input in the decisions made by the school system. Finally, we'd like to take a moment to encourage the public to get involved in our schools. While the people in this room are likely already involved, we invite others to take time to explore what we do for children and families, become involved in your local school. Whether you have a school-aged child or not, our schools need whole communities to play a role in ensuring our success. Donating time and resources to our schools is a valuable way to take part. Join the local PTA. Volunteer as a mentor to a child. Give gently-used books to our classrooms. There are so many ways to make a difference, and the school employees appreciate your help. Our schools are amazing places to learn and grow, so please come and join our work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is item 2.02, Student Representative Matters. I will call on Mr. Press.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start off my remarks tonight by recognizing the outstanding efforts of students across the county in celebrating Mental Health Awareness Week, which I mentioned earlier. Students at many schools develop mental health awareness activities, wear green and supportive increased awareness, and develop various initiatives that work to reduce stigma around mental illness. These efforts are critical in our ongoing battle against mental illness in our schools, which is one of my priorities as student representative. On that same theme, I'm pleased to announce that in coordination with students from across the county, FCPS, pardon me, from across schools in FCPS, we'll be establishing a mental health task force. This group will meet to discuss in-school factors of mental health issues, established best practices, and potential policy recommendations for the School Board and Superintendent to consider. This work will reduce the effect of students working in a vacuum, so to speak, and will allow schools to more effectively share and coordinate their resources in this ongoing fight. As a quick PSA, I figured it was worth noting that our Crisis Link text line number, an important tool for students to use when in crisis, has changed. The new number is 85511, keyword "need help," all one word. I would encourage any and all students, parents, and community members to add this number to your phones. On another note, the 2015-16 Student Advisory Council began its work last week, and I'd like to thank Dr. Garza, Ms. Hines, and Ms. Evans for their attendance at that meeting. The work that this group is committed to is extremely timely, as the Board considers difficult budget cuts the voice of students' needs to remain an important part of the conversation. The SAC will be meeting once a month until April, at which point it will present its recommendations to Dr. Garza and the leadership team, and I look forward to conveying those opinions to the Board as those conversations continue. I'm also very excited to begin my student engagement visits this month. I'll be starting off at South County on October 19, followed by Woodson High School in Fairfax later that week. I look forward to a lively discussion on issues that are important to students at each school. I'll be sure to keep the Board updated on issues that are important to them. In the meantime, I wish all the students in FCPS a safe and wonderful long weekend and a happy Columbus Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press, for all your good work. Item 2.03, Spotlight on Learning. I call on Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you. We're so excited to be able to present this Spotlight on Learning tonight. I actually am not sure who I'm supposed to call up to the mic, but I will tell you this. I understand Lane Holden, right in front. I think she's going to introduce everyone. And then after the presentation of video, I know that we have students from Lanier Middle School and, of course, Aaron Linart, the principal there at Lanier Middle Schools here as well. So at the end, I think we're going to have an opportunity for questions. So I'll turn it over to you and allow you to tee us up for this Spotlight on Learning. This is an important piece of work that we have going on all throughout our system, and we appreciate the support that you provide. As Steve Greenberg mentioned earlier, I know that it's instrumental in helping support our schools in their green efforts, so all yours.
Thank you very much for inviting Get to Green here this evening to update you on what we're doing. I've seen several of you at our events over the last couple of months and really appreciate your support for environmental stewardship in the county. We have an exciting program tonight. I'll spend just a few moments to tell you about what the adults are doing to move this program forward in the district. And then I'm going to turn the podium over to Anise, who is a former student here at Luther Jackson and a current student at Falls Church High School, to talk a little bit about some of the programs she did here and is now doing at Falls Church. And we also have, David Hartford is our seventh grade life science teacher here at Luther Jackson that has been working with students here to spearhead the pollinator garden that you've seen developing over the past couple of years out in front of the... seen developing over the past couple of years out in front of the school. In addition, we have a fabulous video that was taken last spring at our School Environmental Action Showcase. And as some of you know, the showcase, we are able to be part of that in partnership with Nova Outside, George Mason University, and James Madison University. And we did this wonderful video last spring, and we have several of the stars of that video from Lanier Middle School here in our audience tonight, along with their teacher leaders and their principal, Erin Leonard. So you'll be able to see that. And when you see this video, you'll be able to really see how the work we're doing is tied to FCPS priorities like STEAM, project-based learning, and how we have students developing all of the portrait of a graduate skills through environmental stewardship projects. So anyway, a little bit about what's happening with the adults. Besides meeting FCPS strategic goals, the work we're doing with Get to Green is really aiming at meeting federal requirements under the 2014 Chesapeake Bay Agreement, signed by Governor McAuliffe, and then Governor McAuliffe's subsequent environmental literacy governor's challenge that was issued last April 2015. The Bay Agreement focuses on two main areas. The first area is environmental literacy. They start the two areas that they're really looking at, school districts to focus on. For environmental literacy, we have a lot of work going on in instructional services. I know Noelle Klowenko is here today. We appreciate her support. But we are getting more and more disciplines across the school district involved in environmental stewardship, and some that might be surprising to you. ART, ESOL, some of our alternative education centers are getting very involved in some of our projects, and they're really looking at these authentic, real-world problems and issues as great ways to further learning. We're seeing a greater number and an increase in the complexity of the stewardship projects that our students are getting involved in over the last years. Just to give you a few statistics, they're not quite as big as the transportation statistics, but we have about 150 schools that we can say are engaged in at least one activity. We have 80 schools registered under our EcoSchools USA program, and we are partnered with the National Wildlife Federation in that program. We have about 60 edible gardens, 90 wildlife habitats, and 120 schools with student-driven recycling programs. The EcoSchools program is an award program culminating with a green flag. Lanier will be very proud to show you their green flag. Perhaps we can have a nice photo with the green flag after this. We currently have eight green flag schools, and we have four pending green flags, four schools that are just finishing up their paperwork. And we're trying to have an announcement like we had with the Energy Star certifications. If we can pull in those four green flags, we'll have more green flags in the other school districts in the nation. But we are neck and neck with that other small school district, New York City Public Schools, so we have to keep working at it. And then, of course, we had a huge announcement for us this past month. The National Wildlife Federation issued a list of the top 10 green schools in the nation, and Centerville Elementary School was on that list. So we're really, really proud of that. And we'll be celebrating all of these green flags, also the bronze-level, silver-level schools, and Centerville's big announcement at our Get to Green Principals Meeting on October 27th. The second area that the Chesapeake Bay Agreement asks us to really focus on is sustainable schools overall. So I've been working closely with Jeff Plattenberg and his organization for a couple of years already, looking at that, and we have a couple of interesting things that are new that we're working on. We have a new sustainability team with cross-departmental representation to develop joint goals in the format of our strategic plan around topics like sustainable landscaping, waste reduction, and, of course, energy conservation. And we are building on our energy conservation and our Energy Star announcement by really focusing on training for teachers to work on energy conservation activities, and we're running a number of those programs this year. But enough of what the adults are up to. Let's hear from some students. So Anise, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about what you've been working on?
Hi, I'm Anise. I was a student at Luther Jackson Middle School and now a student at Falls Church High School. So in seventh grade, I was part of the EcoSchool program, and I helped build one of the first gardens at the front of the school. I found it a lot, I thought it was like a lot of fun, and it was a way for me to learn about new people and experience things with kids I've never met before, and with the new age and technology and everything, how kids don't really like going outside and everything like that. I still thought it was fun, playing in the dirt was fun. I learned about the native plants and how important it is to use native plants and the benefits of using them and maintaining a healthy ecosystem, and how when you teach kids when they're young about being green and everything, they can go back and teach their parents about it when they go home, and then they can take those skills and apply it to when they're older. I did that a couple of weeks ago for my Girl Scout project. I created a student garden at my school. We used all native plants, and I was able to get some kids from my school to help out, some kids from the National Honor Society. And afterwards, they said they found it was a lot of fun, and they would like to do it again, and so I'm planning on starting an environmental club at my school. So I'm basically here to teach about the importance and how good it is to be green and everything, how you should keep the program going. Thank you.
What were my favorite days this school year? Well, getting a perfect score on a super-hard math test, getting a new phone, and of course, attending the School Environmental Action Showcase at George Mason University.
Definitely. The showcase is one of the best days this year.
Each year, the showcase provides a unique opportunity for regional K-12 students to participate in four events. Students use art and design, as well as technology, science, engineering, and math to solve environmental problems.
The eco-team projects demonstrate how students can make a difference with their thinking. At McLean High School, for example, students conducted an energy audit impacting the future cost of school heating. Jason explains this way.
One of the biggest problems in our school is the heating. A lot of the energy goes towards heating the school, and there's a lot of problems that come with our heating. So our biggest goal is to change the heating within our school. One of the biggest problems teachers complain about is certain parts of the hallways will be too hot and some will be too cold. And another problem we have is a lot of heat is wasted on places like the gym and the cafeteria, big spaces that are heated when no one's really using them.
One of my favorite projects at the showcase was for my own school. Lanier students banned water bottles and created Cups for Change. This school effort generated a lot of praise and eventually earned us a spot at the regional competition, which we won.
We have eight displayed cups that are about the world water crisis for the world. It could be about the people in Africa who don't have as much water for us, and we have some facts on these QR codes that would tell us about the women and children who would go four miles to walk to get the water. And we did this activity during ART that we would practice walking down with jugs of water, and we calculated how many times we could get up and down the hallway and how long it would take for people in Africa to do that.
The showcase is a competitive event. Real scientists and environmental experts would score presentations in several categories. I was kind of nervous when I presented, but I got through it. College students would also score presentations. These George Mason University students are studying to be teachers, and they would also interview kids for their own college classes.
As a future teacher, what really impresses me is they are looking to make other students aware rather than kind of adults, because one of the students I talked to, their targeted age group was seven to 10 years old. And that just blew my mind because they realized that at seven to 10 years old, you know, pollution issues and environmental issues they're not really aware of.
Schools had multiple teams at the showcase. Some teams focused on turbines while others emphasized eco projects. There were groups that highlighted watershed issues and teams that looked at recycled materials and asked, "Could this stuff make a school mascot?"
Using the rubric, I'm taking a look at what kinds of items they're using. Is there creativity, or is this something that would be a very easy design to come up with? We're also looking at how many recyclables they're using, because it can't be a project about recycling unless they're really making a majority of their project about recycling, which most of them here are almost 100%. We're looking at how many recyclables they use. You don't want it to be all the same thing. And we're also taking a look at how creative and original it is.
Well, we had a holder, a putter, and a looker.
The looker would look into the sculpture through a glass to line up the dolphin. The holder would hold up a piece, and the looker would tell him where to put it, and the putter would staple it onto the roof. So it was a lot of communication through all the three jobs.
And I think that it was just a very good group project.
When students weren't explaining their team projects to other kids, they were talking to real environmentalists who work in Fairfax County.
It's important that everybody understands wastewater and how it's treated, but for our industry, too, it's important that we get young people involved and interested. These are the people that are going to be working in the future. These are the people that are going to be cleaning the water. They might come up with better technologies.
Our world really needs people like us to help get the earth clean for future generations of life, and if we don't do this, we probably won't have an understanding in the future on how to make these.
The School Environmental Action Showcase encourages young people to understand the importance of environmental stewardship and applying the stuff they learn at school to solve real problems that may harm our planet.
But I learned that students can make a difference.
I just want to say a huge thank you to Sarah and Ryan for all the energy they put into that video and all the great things going on at Lanier and Luther Jackson. So we'd love to take a photo with you.
Thank you. That was really delightful. So yes, we want everyone who is in any way involved with all that wonderful work to come up front. And do you actually have a flag for us to?
Yes, they do.
You do? Bring that up, too. Okay, come on down.
Some of you can stand up on the thing.
Come on up. We don't bite.
Everybody see the camera?
Madam Chairs, we're kind of gathering, if it's all right, if I might make a couple of comments. I carried this little bookmark around with me that has a portrait of a graduate on it, and I just have it within my little journal. And as we were listening to the presentation tonight, Elaine, and watching the video, I was so impressed with how many skills it was obvious the students were learning and demonstrating that are reflected in our portrait of a graduate. So I'm very impressed with the work, and it's interesting, the wonderful theme we have going on. Last month, we talked about the conservation with regard to our energy consumption and best-in-class school system being the highest number of Energy Star-certified schools, and then the green flag schools looks like we're, you said, we're tied, and so probably not too far away, we'll beat New York City with that as well. So this has been, long been, a priority of the school system and a stated goal, and it's making a difference in the lives of students, and we very much appreciate your leadership. You know, how many schools are you supporting now? 140-something probably with this work? It's growing? Lean and mean, but making a very big impact, so we thank you very much for your work.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you. So in fact, Ms. Tolan, we might, board members might have some things to say and questions to us, so if you want to join us back at the mic, thank you. I have Mr. Press, followed by Ms. Strauss.
So I'm just going to kind of start this off with a brief thought, and that thought is the best leaders lead by example. This, to me, is an incredible showcase of what students can do when they care about an issue that they see in their school. You know, last month, we were very fortunate, as Dr. Garza said, to get a presentation from what the adults can do and what the division side of things can do when we commit ourselves to a principle. But the creative thinking, the ethical citizenship, the collaboration that I've seen from this and heard blows me away and makes me really, really excited for the future of Fairfax County schools. And this, you know, as these young men and women come into high school and really start getting the toolkits beyond what they may have now, I just can't imagine the incredible things that they're going to come up with. And particularly, as an alumni of Luther Jackson, that wasn't something that I had the benefit of working with when I was here, but as I came back and I saw that growth year over year, I was so impressed. So I'd just like to thank you on behalf of all the students that you've worked with and the incredible impact that you're having across FCPS. We can't thank you enough for the impact you're making.
Thank you. We are seeing a lot more activity in our high schools, too. When we first started the program, it was kind of like, okay, 200 schools. You know, Marty Smith was right there with us in the very beginning, all these schools, a halftime person, where do we start? So we started with elementary and training elementary school teachers, and now we're seeing just the explosion of interest, and we're seeing the kids moving up into these other, you know, levels, and so we're seeing much more activity at the high schools in the last couple of years.
Great. Ms. Strauss?
I want to thank you. This is really very, very impressive. We've come so far, and we've come a long way in a relatively short period of time. Certainly, our kids are doing fabulous work, their teachers are doing fabulous work, but I have to tell you, Elaine, you have been wonderful.
Thank you.
And sometimes people don't realize how meaningful a program can become and how it can expand and really be something there for all children if we have somebody there to coordinate and to plant the seed and to make it work. Efforts like this are very hard to sustain if it is simply individual schools doing a lot of projects, because over time, we do have a lot of wonderful projects. But to have this kind of impact in every school with this kind of coordination, support of our children and our teachers, it doesn't happen without you. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. I would like to say, we have amazing administrators. We have our Get to Green Principals Group, which we started with a handful of principals, you know, a few years ago, and that has grown considerably as well, as other administrators see what's really working, people are getting on board, and all of those administrators and then their teachers really just do this because they know it's the right thing.
All right, well, I'd like to just say a few things and ask some questions. First of all, a shout-out to Centerville Elementary School and Principal Dwayne Young, yes, right, who actually hired me into the system. So he's been making good decisions all along.
We have that in common. Dwayne hired me as well.
Yeah, there you go, right. He's a good decision-maker that way. But that's wonderful to hear, and I'm very proud of them. And Anise, she's not here, but it was so nice to hear from her, because I think what we heard in what she said and what we saw on the video as well is that, you know, when I go out into the schools, it seems like every school that I visit, there's something going on. There are all these pilots and all different ways that people in the buildings are being creative, and so you worry about the sustainability of sustainability, right? I mean, how do we keep it going? And I think... And I think what she is showing us and what the video showed us is that we sustain it through the students. That as long as we are really engaging them and they are identifying the problems and collaterally finding solutions, that this will continue to happen. So the idea, I guess, is that it grows, you know, on its own. But I did want to ask you, knowing that you are one person in 190 schools, right? If you had to tell the board, you know, what is the need that you see every day, you know? And not pie in the sky, but what you really need to do your job the way you want to.
So I've been thinking about that. I thought you might ask that question. So I think it goes back to the idea of we have so many staff members out there working on these projects. And they're doing it, you know, after school, before school, extra time. A lot of the training programs that we run for teachers, fortunately with the new PD program that we have this year that, you know, I and Steve worked really hard to put together with the administrators. We have a number of our training programs on those professional development days. So that makes it a little bit easier for teachers to attend. Historically, we've run most of our training after school on Saturdays. So, you know, Noel and I have talked a little bit about this already, you know, a little bit more sub-money, for example, to really support, having staff people be able to get more training and work with their students. That might be one thing. Jeff Plattenberg's organization has been extremely helpful with our internal grant program that we've been running each year. The schools absolutely love that program and being able to actually get some money to support the projects that they're doing. And we would not be seeing the growth and, as I mentioned, the increase in complexity of projects that we're seeing without that internal grant program. And then Jeff is also supporting us with administrative support, you know, recycling signs, you know, those kinds of tools. We are working under the EcoSchools program. So we cover a lot of different topic areas from water conservation, sustainable landscaping, you know, energy conservation, climate change, education, et cetera, et cetera. So having a little bit more teacher support to really have the teachers that are doing amazing things be able to share those best practices with other teachers would be really helpful.
Thank you. Those are great ideas. Mr. McElvee?
I just want to remark on how incredible it is that we've come this far in only a couple of years. I mean, you just took on this position, maybe, what, two years ago? And it's, I mean, it's evolved.
Four. It's four.
Four, okay, well.
This is the third school year. It's full-time. So that helps. There was a halftime before that.
Yeah, time flies. But I mean, the fact that you cover so much territory is incredible. And I will say, not to put Mr. Plattenberg on the spot, but whenever we, over the past few years, have asked him about sustainability, he just said, "Keep waiting. Keep waiting. It's coming." And I think now we're seeing everything flower. And so that's all very exciting for all of us. I do have to ask, though, the project about the water bottles, was that funded by Ms. Hines up here? That's one of her pet projects. She's trying to get the board to convert to using cups as opposed to plastic water bottles.
And I think I need some help. Because if you look at this table, everyone but me, oh, and Mr. Valkoff, has a single-use disposable water bottle in front of them.
But that's very close to our hearts. So thank you for all that you've done.
Absolutely. We have to lead by example, right?
Thank you, Mr. McElvee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Okay. All right. Item 3.01, Proposed Freedom Hill Vienna Expedited Boundary Adjustment. I'm going to hand the gavel off to Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. And we are on action, item 3.01, Proposed Freedom Hill Vienna Expedited Boundary Adjustment. I call on Mrs. Reed for a motion.
Yeah, I got it. I move to approve adjustments to school attendance areas effective for the 2016-17 school year in order to balance enrollment and utilization of school facilities pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1-794 and Policy 8130.7, local school boundaries, program assignments, and school closings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. Mrs. Reed, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I will, very briefly. This has been a long time coming. And as was discussed tonight in the public testimony, we did involve the community from the very beginning. So there were no surprises, Ms. Hines and I, Mr. Plattenberg, Mr. Sneed, all the staff. This was a true partnership. And I can speak for both of us when I say we're very proud of this. This was the first quote-unquote "boundary light." And we thought there must be a way that we can affect change to a relatively small number of people. But to those people, it makes a world of difference. And so I just wanted to say that what was most, I think, gratifying for me is that we were able to negotiate, to really carve out kind of a win-win situation for everyone. So when the community members brought concerns, we would bring those to the table and truly and honestly try to find solutions to each and every one, down to the individual basis. So I'm very proud of this effort, and I urge my colleagues to support this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Ms. Hines, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, yeah. When I first got on the board four years ago, I started hearing from residents in that part of Vienna. And they had a really good point and a good argument. And so we, again, working together, we managed to find a solution. I want to thank Dr. Garza, Mr. Plattenberg, and other staff, our two regional assistant superintendents, Mr. Tyson and Mr. Zuluaga, for helping to iron out a solution. And I mean, I think we have found a solution that works for everybody. And if, you know, obviously, if there's anyone who's, needs a little, who has any concerns about it, you can contact either one of us, and we will work with you. The staff has proven throughout this whole process that they will work with parents to make this work, so.
Dr. Garza?
Yes, thank you. I do think this was very much an effort of, you know, putting it out there, identifying the challenges, finding solutions, continuing more of an iterative process to find the best path forward, recognizing that with any boundary change, we don't make everyone happy. And that's difficult. But finding the best solution for the system and for the greater good. I did want to point out, because I'm sure there are folks listening to this and thinking, "Well, we need one in our area, too." We've been, I know a couple of board members have identified some similar situations in some other areas. And so know that we're working on those as well, just kind of one at a time. So we have some others that are on our radar, and your board members have been bringing those up diligently. So we'll work on those next. So thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's no other board member that wishes to speak, I will take a vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye. And that is unanimous with Mr. Stork, Ms. McLaughlin, and Ms. Schultz, Mrs. Schultz away from the table. The motion passes. And I will turn the gavel back over to its rightful custodian.
Okay, thank you. All right, item 4.01, Minutes. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 4.01, Approve the Minutes of September 24, 2015 Regular School Board Meeting. 4.02, Award the Contract for the Automatic Temperature Control System Replacement at Poplar Tree Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Advanced Power Control, Inc., in the amount of $365,100, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.03, Appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the Agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the Consent Agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the Consent Agenda is approved. Item five, New Business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 5.01, Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution. 5.02, Policy 3510. Are we, I'm sorry. It says this item has been withdrawn, and we'll be, okay, I'll read that. Policy 3510, Adult Education, Adult Literacy, Adult High School Completion and Community Education. This item has been withdrawn tonight and will be heard at a future date. 5.03, Calendar Revision for March 1, 2016 Primary Day. 5.04, Virginia Retirement System Resolution. Item 6.01, Superintendent Matters. I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You know, we, again, despite the challenges we have related to budget, all of our employees, always, every year, they're so dedicated, so talented. And with whatever they have available to them, they dig in. And we have such wonderful students as well. We continue to demonstrate wonderful, very high student performance. We've received some of that just recently. Again, as has been for many years in the past, our SAT scores are above state and national averages. Those were just recently released. And our community should be very proud of that. With regard to a Virginia test, our composite scores are very, very high. But I think what's even more important is our schools, we're 146 points above the entire state of Virginia, the average is there, and 207 points above the national averages, again, related to the SAT. Graduation rates continue to trend very strongly. And I think that's a tribute to certainly our schools, despite the growing educational needs of our students. They continue to pay attention and make sure that we're meeting the needs of students and they're graduating on time. With regard to academic, excuse me, advanced studies diplomas, we had 63.1% of our students graduate under the advanced diploma, and the state average is around 50%. So, you know, there's things that we can certainly continue to be proud of. We had record number of students, again, to receive the National Merit Scholarship. And they'll be competing for, I think, around $32 million worth of scholarships. And then we've been talking a lot about Jeff Plattenberg over the last couple of meetings or so, and I worry for his ego. But it is certainly, I think, appropriate for us to, again, congratulate Jeff because he was just, it was just announced that he is one of the 2015 BAMI Award laureates. Jeff was selected as a model of what's right in American education. The letter from the Academy of Education Arts and Sciences says, "This year's honorees are among the most creative people in the education field. You are leading the way for all of us, and we thank you." The BAMI Award is a cross-discipline honor that identifies and acknowledges extraordinary work done across the entire field of education every day. And so it is very appropriate for us to, again, acknowledge Jeff Plattenberg and his great work, and very proud to have him on our team. And then finally, I want to say, I know I speak on behalf of this entire system, that we're very grateful to our governor for continuing to talk in the public around his commitment for increased funding in our state for K-12 education. So important. I heard one of our board members say just recently, reminded me, we're in the top 10% in terms of wealth for our state, yet we're in the bottom 10 with regard to education funding. Excuse me, top 10 in number of wealth, bottom 10 in education funding. And that's just unacceptable. So we're very grateful to our governor for continuing to put that notion forward, his commitment to increasing funding for public education, and we're grateful. We continue to urge, as those conversations move forward, that that's money without strings attached to it. Because if there are requirements associated with it, we would only get, if it's state money, only a very limited amount of money to fund those requirements. So again, we're very grateful for those continued conversations. And we look forward to potentially increasing our position as it relates to other states on K-12 funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Item seven, Board Reports. I call on Ms. Strauss for a report on the Audit Committee.
Thank you. We had an Audit Committee report on September 30th and 1st. It was our first official meeting for our new Auditor General, Golley Trump. And we welcomed her, and we're very pleased that she is now a part of our team. At the, at this Audit Committee meeting, we were presented with a report called Strengthening the Elementary Reading Program for all FCPS students. This was a literacy and dyslexia audit, which, by the way, will be presented again at the Work Session on October 19th. But just to give you a flavor, the focus of the literacy audit was done by Dr. Marjorie Lipsom from the University of Vermont. The dyslexia audit was performed by Dr. Deborah Reed from the University of Iowa. So these were out, these were external consultants. Again, we were not evaluating ourselves. And then there was also our own staff response and next steps as a result of the audit or the recommendations. It's very well done, very interesting. And there will be a full presentation of this at the Work Session on October 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moon for a report on Governance.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Governance Committee had a meeting on October 25, October 5. I wish I could say October 25. The first topic of discussion was planning for December 12, 2015 School Board Retreat. And we are going to have one more meeting after the election is done on November 3rd before we bring the proposals to the full board. The second meeting of discussion was potential guidelines regarding electronic participation by the board members absent from the meeting. We did decide to ask our Division Counsel for legal guidance on this one first before we go to the next step. And we did take a look at the annual calendar, and there is no change to the calendar from the last time we saw.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, Board Matters. I call on Ms. Schultz.
Just very quickly, I want to say I thank the West Springfield community. I went to a PTA meeting where they joined forces with their civic association to have a joint meeting, and what a phenomenal idea. So it brought a lot of people into a school who would not normally be there for a PTA meeting and created the opportunity for me to come. And it was almost like an ad hoc citizen town hall. I was amazed at how many people were there. I want to thank Linda Herrera, the PTA president there, who always does a phenomenal job and welcomed the new principal. And so that's a terrific opportunity for other PTA presidents who are out there, either in my district or in other districts, to join forces. If you do have a local, either a civic association or a homeowners association, and it allows for cross-communication on things. You know, we discussed traffic matters, the build-out at West Springfield High School, and the budget, and lots of different things. So I definitely encourage that kind of collaboration. They're definitely leaders down there. And then the other thing is, in coming forward, in a week or so, you'll get a kit. I'm going to hold a Budget Town Hall for the Springfield District, moving to the other end of the district, because people forget how big the Springfield District is. It goes from Shantilly High School all the way down to Rolling Road and Irving Middle School. So we'll be holding that Budget Town Hall at Centerville High School on Tuesday, October 27th, at approximately 7:00 in the evening. Please look for information shortly. Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Here's a question for my colleagues. Did anyone know what Wednesday was? It was a special day. Wednesday was International Walk to School Day. So I participated, as I do every year. I walked with the families from Timber Lane and Graham Road. And it's just so much fun to be part of the community once again and remember what it's like to walk your kids to school. I was a walker years ago, many years ago, and just shared fond memories of that. And of course, that kind of wraps up into our whole Portrait of a Graduate and student health and well-being. So I saw a lot of walkers on that day, more so than usual. So there's the typical walkers who go every day, but on that day, they encouraged more people to do it. So that was wonderful to see. Also, Mr. Moon and I, I'll go ahead and mention that we were at the Kilmer Community Night, where they showcased a wealth of after-school activities, sponsored both by the school as well as the community.
well as the community organizations. And Mr. Moon can tell you, he was at a booth playing some game. I didn't understand it, but he was keeping kids captivated for quite some time. So, that was, what struck me is there's the depth and breadth of activities offered for everybody, something for everyone, so it was exciting to see that. And I won't steal the thunder of Ms. Evans, but I will say that several of us were at a very special celebration at Falls Church High School, and I will let her tell about that, but that is something that she in particular is to be congratulated on. And last but not least, I'm still collecting the letters to troops, as we do every year in the Providence District, and they'll be put in packages for the troops on October 24th. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking for one particular picture I took at the Fairfax City School Board meeting. I am Fairfax County School Board Liaison to the Fairfax City School Board, and they had a meeting on Monday, that was the first time for me to attend their meeting as a county school board liaison, and they were looking at capital improvement plan. They're five-year, FI '17 through FI 2021. Five-year budget is, as presented, about $1.3 million. And they were looking at paving, roofing, all just raw pit, and also some little details, which county of school system, our size, it's, you know, 12 school board members, are difficult to take a look at those minor items for our server. But there was, there was quite, you know, there was quite a presentation and a discussion between staff and board members. I was at Forest Church High School a couple of days ago, along with some other board members, but I'm going to let Ms. Evans to talk about that. Back-to-school night is almost over. I think there may be just a couple of schools, but I attended several of them last week. And on Friday, when I was at, Thursday, when I was at Kilmer Middle School, for two years in a row, I've been trying to introduce this particular board game, board game called Go, in Japanese, Padok in Korean, and Wei Chi in Chinese. This is just a game that I grew up playing for many, many years. Last year, I failed miserably. I did a better job this year, attracting more kids, and fortunately, we have a very good community member as a volunteer to teach. I wish I could volunteer to sponsor this, you know, this club, but I have not had a, have not, you know, found, you know, time in my daily schedule to fit that into my activity. But I'm glad to see many more students taking an interest. And I also got principal of those school interested in the game. He has learned to play the game. Have not played him yet, but I will. Thank you.
Ms. Evans, it sounds like you have something to share.
Well, actually, this has been a very busy month, so I will start by saying how great it was to visit at Annandale High School for their ribbon cutting of their synthetic turf field. Thank you for the board members who joined me there. That was shortly after our ribbon cutting at Stewart High School, so we are almost complete with all of our synthetic turf fields, and we're very pleased with that. As Mr. Moon said, the back-to-school nights are wrapping up. I was very pleased to go to as many of those as I could, as well as the Student Advisory Committee, the first meeting, and I hope to go to other meetings and meet with students from the schools I represent there, too. I was pleased to attend a meeting at Parklawn Elementary School, where Education Secretary Arnie Duncan was there to talk about the preschool initiative grant that funded one of the preschool classes there, and is serving children very well, and a reminder of how important preschool is to all of our children, and particularly our neediest children. So, that was an excellent event, and I thank the Parklawn School community for hosting us there as well. And I did want to talk a little bit about our wonderful celebration at Falls Church High School on Tuesday. We are celebrating the initiative, the Vietnamese Language Program Initiative. This is the very first Vietnamese language program, not only in Fairfax County, but in the entire state of Virginia. And so, we are very pleased and proud to have this at Falls Church High School. And, you know, I thank my colleagues, Mr. Moon, Mrs. Reed, and Mr. McElveen, for not only attending the celebration, but also for being so supportive and so much a part of that initiative. So, thank you for that. We had wonderful performances. We had a fashion show with traditional Vietnamese fashion, and excellent food, Vietnamese food as well. So, I hope everybody got to eat the food and learn a little bit about Vietnamese culture and history and tradition. And I did want to give a shout-out to Jeannie Nguyen, who is President of the Voice of Vietnamese Americans. She has been so instrumental in, she organized that celebration, but more, she and members of the Vietnamese-American community have been true partners in collaborating with us on getting this program up and running. And of course, Principal Mike Yeoh, who has made it a success already. They have two sections of Vietnamese there, and we're very, very proud of that, and hope to extend that. I just wanted to mention, too, that Sleepy Hollow had, Sleepy Hollow Elementary School had their Food Day there. This is, I believe, second or third maybe Food Day in Fairfax County. It's supported by Real Food for Kids, as well as got support from the, from FCFT. They bought T-shirts for the staff, and I think for kids as well. So, I appreciate their support for that. It was great. We had wonderful food. They went from station to station. They had zumba. Nice, healthy day at Sleepy Hollow Elementary School. And last but not least, I want to add my voice to congratulations for Jeff Plattenberg with his BAMI Award. Very well deserved.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. First, I want to thank Charmaine Williams, who is our interim principal at Great Falls Elementary. She is being extremely well-received at back-to-school night. I think we greeted every parent coming in the door, so thank you, Ms. Williams. And I want to thank Janet Funk, who is our interim principal at Spring Hill Elementary School. She is also doing a fine job, and I think the parents and the teachers are very pleased. And again, welcome to Jeremy Donnelly, who is our new principal at Hancock, who is settling in. Myself, Mr. Moon, Mr. Velkoff, and Mr. McElveen, were at the Herndon Band-sponsored competition and performance last week. It's a yearly event. It's wonderful to see the very outstanding competitions of the schools and the bands that come in, and of course, we're always very proud of our Herndon High School band. Also, Franklin Sherman Elementary School was the recipient of a grant from Dominion Virginia Power. That's part of the Eco Schools Project. Dominion Virginia Power built an outdoor classroom that will enhance their activities that are a part of their outdoor garden and their environmental studies, so, and Elaine Tolan was there. So, that was very nice. I would also like to thank now the thousands of parents and family members who are all working very hard to assist the gun store in moving further away from Franklin Sherman Elementary School. So, I want to thank the community. We're working very hard to find a better location. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the Foundation of Music Education announced that the Rocky Run Middle School Chamber Orchestra, which is directed by Stephen Mathi, is a commended winner in the Mark of Excellence National Orchestra Honors Project. And this is a competition that's entered by recordings, and when I look at all the winners, most of them are from Texas, so this is really good, there was a Virginia winner, so I congratulate the school and their orchestra. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen?
Thank you, Ms. Hines. A lot has been said up here tonight about Mr. Moon's skill at the game of Go, and let me just say, a couple of years ago, I was held hostage on a bus with him, and he taught me the game, and we played multiple times, and he's still far better than I am.
On the way to UVA, right?
Right, right, right. I just want to echo everything that was said about Falls Church, and how wonderful the new Vietnamese program is. It's wonderful when we can celebrate the heritage languages of our community, and just to see that community and how proud they were of that was very, very rewarding. So, thanks to you, Mr. Moon, and everyone else who's worked on that. Today, I had the honor of a very typical school board member activity of jumping out of a box at the Westfield Pep Rally to crown the homecoming king, and congratulations to Shad there, who is their homecoming king. It was a lot of fun. I hope I don't have to do that again, because frankly, I was very sweaty in that box. And then finally, tonight, we are honoring the birthday of Eileen, who, for her first school board meeting, we're very proud to have that honor. And it's also for our friend who is sipping wine at home, watching us. It is Pam Goddard's birthday. Well, she's not at home, I guess she's in Key West, yeah. So, she's watching on her cellphone. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Darren Ekofax?
Yes, happy birthday, Pam, and happy birthday, Eileen. I, too, finished up my back-to-school visits, and of course, it's a great opportunity to meet with parents, teachers, and old friends, and particularly, old schools where my children went, so it's always a wonderful time, and I enjoyed that very much. I attended a groundbreaking for the new elementary school at Fort Belvoir, and that was interesting. I also, I chaired, went with Ms. Evans and attended the pre-K grant where Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, and VA Secretary of Education were there, and we, some of us had the opportunity to actually talk to them and really provide input how pre-K is so important to our community, so our children come ready to learn to kindergarten. So, that was a great opportunity for that. I held a coffee at Grounded Coffee Shop, and I had lots of attendance. This was two days ago. So, I thank everybody for coming out and sharing your thoughts and questions and comments with me. It was a great opportunity to meet different people who I hadn't been able to talk to at back-to-school night, so thank you all for coming. I am going to be going to both Rose Hill and Crestwood PTAs in the next few weeks, in meetings to discuss our budget, and I look forward to attending homecoming at West Potomac and Edison in the coming weeks. So, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Garza?
Thank you. I feel to mention, I just want to thank Jenny Strauss and Ryan McElveen for joining, attending the Business Roundtable that we hosted and, at Falls Church High School, and they did such a great job, the students, and of course, the principal. And we, it was attended by bankers and leaders in the finance industry in our county. So, thank you both for being there this week.
Okay, well, I guess I have the last word, and I should start by apologizing for calling you all out about your plastic water bottles. I'm sorry. I know, I know it's not easy being green, and you're doing the best you can. Anyway, I want to thank Mr. Press for inviting me to the Madison High School Leadership Class this week. It was a wonderful conversation. That's the favorite, my favorite part of this job, is meeting with students. I learned a lot, saw some familiar faces from Louise Archer days, when I used to teach there. So, that was wonderful. Thanks so much to everybody, and to the wonderful teacher of your class. She was extremely helpful. I started my day yesterday walking to school, Walk to School Day. The bus stop for Forest Edge Elementary School is right next to my house, so I met all the students in the whole neighborhood, and we walked over the river and through the woods, because that's how you get to school in Reston. And it was really a lovely way to start the day. They had a great showing. I want to thank Supervisor Penny Gross, who met with Vice Chair Sandy Evans and me yesterday. We had a lovely lunch at Annandale High School's bistro, cooked and served by the students, who did a wonderful job, and it was a really very helpful and very good conversation. There's something about sitting down to a nice meal that helps you work together and have a great conversation. So, thank you to Supervisor Gross and to all the folks at Annandale High School helped us out. Saturday, two days from now, the Vienna Volunteer Fire Department will have its open house at the firehouse there from 10 to 4. A lot of family activities, activities for children, so please try to get over there. And on October 14th, at South Lakes High School, the South Lakes PTA is hosting a, sort of a Budget Town Hall. It's a budget conversation with Supervisor Kathy Hudgens and me, and it'll just, it'd be an opportunity for any parents or anyone in the community to come and ask us questions, and I think, really looking forward to it. I thank them very much for setting that up. We are heading into a four-day weekend for students, so have a wonderful weekend, everybody. And this meeting is adjourned.